Good afternoon. Want to welcome all of you to the June 15, 2017 meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. And this is our third day in a row in being in session. And we had two days of budget presentations and deliberations. Today, we have a very important matter. And we want to again thank everybody who is joining with us, certainly our candidates that we'll be interviewing here in a moment. We need to make some announcements, call the role, establish a quorum, and then we'll get into the main portion. We do have a couple of other items on the agenda we'll need to deal with in advance of beginning the process for the interviews for the assessor position. So, Flo, I'll turn to you.
Good afternoon. Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have Quorum.
Thanks.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Monday, June 19 at 1:00 p.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices.
Okay. Thank you for the announcements. Mr. Devine, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today, please? Thanks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's, we have a couple of items that we continued over from yesterday. Let's take those items, Items 1 and 2, on the consent calendar, and we may have some other information about those items, so.
Okay, so for your consent matters, I do need a motion to drop Items 1 and 2. That would be, Item 1 is the proposed analog property and business improvement district, and then Item 2 is the proposed WAT and El Camino property and business improvement district.
Okay.
A move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, move and second are twice. Nothing further. Anyone wish to address either of those two items on the agenda? Seeing none, then please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Very good. Okay, with that, then we're going to move down to the main order of business today. And we're, we'll call that item, and then have our Director of Personnel Services for the county give some background, and maybe Mr. Gill gives some introductions as well. And then we'll get things set up and begin the interview process. And just for those who are here, either as candidates or otherwise, we will deliberate in public and can reach a decision today. For some reason, we don't, but it will still be done in this setting. So with that, then Flo, if you want to call the item, please.
Okay, Item number 3 is the interim assessor appointment candidates for, and interviews.
Okay. Mr. Devine.
Good afternoon. David Devine, Director of Personnel Services. Per government code, this process has to be carried out in an open session. And this is, the reason we're doing this is the retirement of our former assessor on May 13. And the purpose of this is to fill the assessor's position for the remainder of the term, which is until January of 2019, when after the election, the new assessor will be put into office, or into office. So we, the county went through a process. We advertised this position from May 15 to May 26. We received three resumes, and we reviewed those resumes for qualifications, also for education and certifications. And in front of you today will be those three candidates. They all met the minimum qualifications for the position. I will call the candidates up here in a little bit after I have to go through some remarks about how the process is going to work today. And this is very unique in the fact that the interviews are being conducted in an open session, so in fairness, we'll have all the candidates seated up front. The questions will be asked to the candidates in a rotating style. So, and candidate, the first candidate will get question 1, then that will go to candidate 2, then candidate 3. Question 2 would then start with candidate 2, 3, and 1, and go down the line that way. There are five questions for the board to ask. So, in terms of looking at how we should have those, how the board should ask those questions, since there's five questions in five districts, I thought in terms of recommendation, we'd have District 1 start with the first question, District 2, question number 2, District 3, 3, and 4, with question 4, and District 5 closing out the interviews.
But that gives me the longest question.
That's why I did it.
There's a lawyer in the group.
I'll make it longer.
So Supervisor Natoli said at the end, we'll ask for deliberations and a vote. And if it needs to be deferred till July, then we'll take it up at that point in time in the same manner.
All right. All right, thanks. Dave, any questions of Ms. Devine at this juncture? Yeah, Ms. Peters?
Looking at these questions, there are some things that I, additional questions that I would like to be able to ask. How would we handle that?
You feel free to ask questions. We can either take them up as the questions, as each one, once the question is answered, if you want to do a follow-up question, or you have questions at the end, then we'll open it up at the end to see if there's any additional questions.
Okay, so if there is something that the candidate answers on questions 1 through 5 that we'd like to follow up on, we do it with that candidate at that time?
Yes.
Okay. But we don't have to have the same follow-up for all three candidates?
No.
Okay.
It's based upon their responses.
Unless it was a standard question, you'd want all three of them to answer. But to your point, yeah, okay, good. All right, any other questions about process, about any of the format?
Mr. Chair, so when we're doing the follow-ups and so forth, if there's, you know, do we punch in, or how do you want to do that?
I think while we're on to question is, you know, yeah, I think just go ahead and capture it at the moment, so I won't worry about saying, you know, supervisor, this and that, just, you know, if one gets in first, then wait.
Just kind of like.
Yeah, I think we're fine with kind of, yeah, it's formal to some degree, but I think informal when it comes to that point, and yeah, so I think we're fine with that.
Thank you.
Okay, good. All right. All right, if there's nothing else, then we would invite our candidates to come forward. Seated, name tags here, Mr. Anderson, Ms. Nguyen, and Ms. Monday. And we welcome you all. So, you have Tom here first, and then Christina, and then Margot. And there is water in the container there and cups, so if you needed to do that before we get started, I see Tom brought water, or maybe others did as well, so. Okay. Let me just, as we embark on this, I think you heard the process, but I guess just before we do that, any questions by the candidates as we embark upon this about process? Does everybody understand kind of how we're going to rotate this? Okay, good.
I had one more.
Oh, sure, yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Peters, go.
If there are questions from the public, how do we handle that?
The.
I only ask because there's half a dozen people sitting here, so.
Right, I mean, I would say, let's, if you have questions from the public, or they want to comment, I would take the questions at the end, have them fill out a speaker card and, at the end. And I think then the chair can decide whether those questions should be directed to, I mean, I would think that the questions should be directed from the board members if a member of the public has something they want to ask. They shouldn't be asking the candidates directly.
Okay, all right, so, good question, Ms. Peters, thanks for asking that. So what we'll do is that if you wish to address the board, certainly within this public process, as we typically do, we'd ask you to fill out a speaker request form. And then if there's a particular question and/or comment, you're certainly welcome to make comments at the end of the conclusion of the interviews, and offer, you know, any input that you like. But if there are questions that would be directed at the candidates, I think as councils advise, those would come through the chair, and we would take those up at that point in time. And if there's anything I need to confer with you on, I will do that. So, again, hopefully this isn't too awkward, but this is the process here in California, certainly in Sacramento County. And this is the first time in probably well over 25 years that we've had a vacancy in one of the elected offices, and where the board is making the appointment. I think last time was a district attorney appointment back in late 80s, early 90s, so. Okay, with that, then we're going to turn to our candidates. And as noted, we're going to start with District 1 Supervisor Serna, work across the dais here, coming back to me with the final question. And we'll ask that of first candidate, and then each of you would respond. Are we going to do any, how about timer? Are we just going to, we didn't talk about this. So, again, try to be concise, recognizing that, you know, we want to hear.
No buzzers going on.
Our clock is even gone, so.
Yeah, I know, we're not running a clock on you.
That one's up.
Yeah, yeah. So again, I would, you know, I think you would all understand, you're all professionals, that try to keep your answers concise, but certainly get to the points, and there's things you want to, in the context of that question, respond to, certainly feel free to do that. And if you get too windy, I'll kind of gently nudge you a little bit. But, okay, so with that, welcome to each of you. And Mr. Serna, you get to start.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this question, I guess, is for Mr. Anderson, right?
Yes, and then we'll go down to each other.
So tell us how your training, education, and experience qualifies you for the interim assessor position.
First of all, I've been in this profession, the assessment profession, for over 22 years now. I began my career back in 1994. I was hired as, shortly after graduating from college, I was hired as a residential real property appraiser for the Salt Lake County Assessors Office in Salt Lake City, Utah. I worked in that job for about three years, and applied for and was promoted to commercial real property appraiser. I worked in that position for several years, and was promoted to commercial property sales analyst, which was responsible for basically doing commercial real estate market analysis, analyzing sales, rents, operating expenses, capitalization rates, basically training the other staff in the, the other commercial appraisers in the commercial department, and developing cap rates, rents, and expense percentages for the other appraisers to use in their appraisals, and cap rates as well. At that point in 2001, there was an opening for the assessor in Kodiak, Alaska, Kodiak Island Borough in Alaska. That was the department head position. I interviewed for that job and was hired, and I held that position for a little over three years. After that, I applied to be the assessor for the Kenai Peninsula Borough in Kenai, Alaska. Actually, the government is in Soldatna, Alaska. I was hired, and that's the position I held, I hold until this day. I also have a bachelor's degree in economics from Utah State University, and I have extensive additional training in professional appraisal courses.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, same question to Christina.
I could ask you any.
Oh, I'm sorry, follow-on question, okay?
Hey, question, Mr. Anderson. This isn't set up in a classic resume format here, so, well, I guess I do have it here, but how long was it between Kodiak Island and Kenai Peninsula? Was it contiguous? I mean, you just went, you applied for another job?
Yes, ma'am.
Or there wasn't, you weren't off for six months or something like that?
No, it just took me a little bit of time to pack up my things and get on the ferry and.
Well, that seems reasonable.
Kodiak's kind of a cold, cold place. I had a friend live there a long time ago.
But I was, I had been offered the position and was hired before I gave my resignation at Kodiak Island Borough.
Okay, thank you. That just wasn't clear to me, so, thank you.
Any other questions for Tom on that question? I'll do that from now on. Okay, Christina.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Natoli, and members, Board of Supervisor members.
You need to really lean into the microphone. We're going to hear you.
My name is Christina Nguyen, and I'm the acting assessor of Sacramento County. I am a results-driven professional with extensive experience in property tax assessment and appraisal. I have 16 years of experience working for the Sacramento County Assessors Office, and seven years' experience working for the Placer County Assessors Office. I also have four years' experience working for CB Richard Ellis, a global real estate services company. I am highly adept at working in property tax appraisal and assessment environments. And I have specialized expertise in performing property appraisals, as well as ensuring compliance with regulations and tax laws. I have exceptional leadership skills related to team initiatives, and a proven record of delivering strong, sustainable results, and successful execution of assessment operations. As assistant assessor, I directed and coordinated fiscal operations, producing the most accurate real property tax rule in over 10 years. I provided a high level of support to the assessor in managing and directing daily operations throughout the assessor's office. I played a key role in ensuring taxable property within the county was identified and assessed, and that the property tax rules were completed timely. In addition, I have been instrumental in enhancing efficiency, introducing process improvements, and reducing costs. My successful management skills have been utilized to oversee and mentor 103 staff, supervisors, and managers, performing real property valuation, customer service, ownership exemptions, and mapping functions. A combined workflow representing over $100 billion of assessed value on the tax rule. My expertise in interpreting and applying Article 13A of the California Constitution and the California Revenue and Taxation Code to operations is a vital skill necessary to ensure property is assessed and equitably in accordance with the law. For two years, I led the California Assessors Association Exemptions Subcommittee as acting chair. Under my leadership, the committee provided analysis for proposed legislation affecting exemptions, ensuring the collective assessor administrative interests were successfully represented in the legislative process. My record of supporting and implementing innovation has yielded results, such as increased access and services to the public and improved operations. A few examples would include continuous upgrades to the assessor's parcel viewer application, ongoing development of a modernized assessor information management system, continuous upgrades to the assessor's award-winning website. In 2006, I received an employee recognition award for innovation from the Placer County Executive Office. My well-rounded experience extends beyond the county borders, including four years providing commercial appraisal and advisory services to private sector clients. I have appraised residential, commercial, and specialized properties like hotels, low-income housing, possessory interests, urban infill projects, regional malls, and sports and entertainment complexes in 17 counties throughout Northern and Central California. My formal education includes a bachelor of science degree from the University of California-Davis in agriculture and managerial economics, and in 2011, I attended the Sacramento County Leadership Academy. I am certified as an advanced appraiser for property tax appraisal purposes by the State Board of Equalization, and I maintain a certified general license from the California Bureau of Real Estate.
Okay, thank you, Christina. Any questions for Christina as a follow-on to anything she's offered thus far? Okay, good, thanks, Christina. Okay, Margot.
Hi, hello. Thank you for inviting me to interview for this position. I certainly don't have the years of assessor's office experience that the other two candidates have. I began my appraisal career in Stanislaw County Assessors Office, where I was given wonderful, solid training in appraisal theory and foundation. During the time I was there, I got the rocks in place to build a career. And I left the assessor's office, moved on to banking, where I was an appraiser for a bank in the Central Valley for a number of years, which broadened my scope considerably, introducing me to Fannie Mae regulations, lending regulations, and all the obligations that an appraiser has in that market. After that, I went on to open my own business and ran my own appraisal shop. That was when the variety of properties that I saw just mushroomed. I found myself appraising everything from mobile homes to multimillion-dollar homes on 100 acres of grapes. I had to become fluent in the fundamentals of the values of growing improvements, working in Stanislaw, San Joaquin County, you have to know something about agriculture. It is what they do there. And so I grew in that department. I was frequently asked by commercial appraisers to co-author reports of apartment buildings and other commercial residential complexes. I was a guest lecturer at Modesto Junior College in appraisal classes. I also helped to train the Appraisal Society in Stanislaw County when the digital age hit, and they didn't know a digital map from a hole in the ground. And so we all kind of came into the 21st century in the same wave. After that, my husband and I were possessed by the devil and decided to move to Sacramento and open a pizza restaurant. I can't explain it, you'll just have to go with me on that. And that's when my real education began. Owning a retail business was like nothing I had ever experienced before. Opened my eyes, managing staff, keeping them happy. First year went as expected. We learned the ropes, we trained our staff, we were almost in the black, and then the recession of 2008 hit. And it was a terrifying time. State of California furloughs happened, and our business dropped by 25% in one month. We rolled up our sleeves, went to work, figured it out. I learned how to keep all the balls in the air, solve problems on the fly, meet a very tight budget, and keep a happy, productive work environment. Customer service is the bottom line for every business, whatever you're doing. And you can't achieve that with a disgruntled, dissatisfied, high-turnover staff. So they become your primary focus. All of these things combined, including my education, I graduated from UCD, hello, Aggie, and with a degree in history of art, mind you, specializing in Greek architecture. One never knows when you're going to need that. Went on, a few years later, my husband was teaching at the University of Montana, and I had free tuition. So I went back to school and took over 21 units of accounting and finance classes, then an additional management classes, computer programming, econ. In other words, even an art history major has to get a job. And so I learned some practical nuts and bolts skills, which easily applied to business as, as I grew. I feel like I bring a fresh perspective to this opening. A serious understanding of the commitment that an assessor has to have to the public in terms of honesty, clarity, and equity. And I think that those skills, while not, I don't know where you keep your staplers and other things, but I think that I could bring something different.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Margot. Any questions of Ms. Wendy? Okay, all right, well, that's the first question. And again, I think that if we try to keep your responses kind of in a five-minute or less framework, and everybody did well at this time, I just look at the clock here a little bit, I'm not going to put it on the clock, but we'll try to keep that as a framework. So if there's no other questions, then thank you all for the responses on the first one. Let's go to question number 2, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. This one you might want to take notes, or feel free to ask me to repeat the question at any time. Detail your management experience with each of the assessor's office's divisions. First, personal property. Second, real property. Third, technical services. Fourth, administration. In your responses, provide your position title, your dates of employment, and your role and responsibilities with each management function.
Okay, and if you have any questions, Christina gets the question first, but, you know, as we get back to.
Want to repeat it?
Be glad.
We, I have it in front of me.
Oh, you guys have that question.
All the candidates have a copy of the question.
No one told us that.
How did you went so slow?
Scene number 2.
Okay.
Yeah, because I couldn't remember all that.
All right, number 2. Christina first. Okay, very good, all right. Christina, you first.
So, for personal property, personal, the personal property division, that represents assessments on the unsecured role. So for my role, my role has generally been more auxiliary with personal property. So most of my focus has been on real property as a manager. But the thing with real property is there are certain property types that require coordination with personal property. And for instance, hotels would be a good example of that, and gas stations. So most of my work with personal property as a manager is basically in a co-manager and support role, but they did not report to me, so I did not have full responsibility for personal property. But real property is a different story. Since I was appointed assistant assessor in 2013, the real property functions have reported to me directly, so I've become fully responsible for their operations. So, and that continues on through to today. For technical services, in 2011, I became the chief appraiser of assessment and technical services. It was a brand-new position. Never, they never had the position in our department before. And since then, I have been directly involved in managing that division. The manager of that division now reports to me, as does the managers of real property. Administration, I play an active role in administration as the assistant assessor. Although most of the staff don't report to me, I am involved in their day, the daily duties, and I am also one of the chief auditors. I have signatory auditor function for the department. And that's it.
Okay. Yes, you can respond to that with those four, okay? So any questions of Christina at this juncture, Ms. question? All right, if not, Margot, same question to you.
Thank you. Well, obviously, I haven't been in the assessor's office, so I don't have management experience in these itemized departments. Certainly when I was there, I was in a position to lead a team doing research, which developed land value assessments for all the condominiums in the county. And this required, some years ago, the application of computer modeling, which at that point had not been used in our office at all. But we were able to come up with a plan that applied equitably and with clarity, so that homeowners understood it, and determined, condominium property, land values are a tricky business. And we managed to crack that nut to the satisfaction of taxpayers. As far as, as the other things, as I said, I did introduce a lot of Central Valley appraisers to the digital age. I am reasonably fluent, obviously. I do not know the ins and outs of this assessor's office and what they're using. And in administration, no assessor's experience, business experience, people experience, and that's what I can offer to you.
Okay, thanks. Any questions on, Ms. Wendy on that one?
Can I make just a blanket clarification?
Sure.
And that's, I think that when we refer to, particularly Ms. Wendy and Mr. Anderson, when we refer to the assessor's office, you know, we're not talking about the Sacramento County Assessors Office, obviously. Okay, so, don't feel like there's any problem there.
Right, okay. All right, thanks for that clarification. No other questions, and Tom, question to you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Specifically with reference to my management experience in these four areas, I've been ultimately responsible for all four of these areas, being the department director, both at Kodiak Island Borough from 2001 to 2005, and from that time until the present at the Kenai Peninsula Borough. I've never directly been a person who, who carried out the personal property appraisals. I have taken education. I understand that the valuation of personal property is similar to a cost approach for real property. It's basically replacement cost less depreciation. But the trouble with real property, or with personal property, is it doesn't have permanent situs. It can, it's movable, you have to discover where it is, and basically, in order to be taxable within your jurisdiction, it has to have situs and nexus. Real property is where most of my experience lies as an appraiser, also as a supervisor. I'm intimately familiar with the appraisal of all types of real property, residential, multifamily. But mostly, I've been a commercial specialist throughout my career. I've appraised all types of commercial, commercial real property, and I've been the supervisor for the entire real property division for the past, since 2001. Technical services. When I took the job for, working for Kodiak Island Borough to be the department director, we had some severe technical difficulties there. There was a CAMA database application in place, but basically, the only thing it could do was hold the data. It could hold the property records. It couldn't calculate anything, it couldn't calculate values, it couldn't process exemptions. So that was a major problem that needed to be addressed. I issued a request for proposals, reviewed those proposals, we got, I think, six proposals, reviewed those with members of my staff in the IT department, selected a vendor, and reviewed those with members of my staff in the IT department, selected a vendor, and carried forward the implementation of that database and the conversion of the data. I don't know if any of you have been through a data conversion before. It's extremely complex, and it often goes badly wrong. In our case, it went very smoothly. We chose a very good vendor who did an extremely thorough gap analysis, was very well prepared for the differences between the structure in our database, our legacy database, and the structure of the data in the new database, and it went very well, very smoothly. So I do have very hands-on experience with those technical matters, and it's an essential part of the assessing department or the assessor's office function. Administration, I was basically in charge of administration at Kodiak Island Borough. I only had a small number of employees. At the Kenai Peninsula Borough, we have two divisions. We have an appraisal division and an administration division, and both of those supervisors of each of those divisions answers directly to me. So I've learned a lot about administration, working with my administration division director at the Kenai Peninsula Borough.
Good, thanks, Tom. Questions?
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, can you tell me how many people you supervised at Kodiak Island and Kenai?
Yes, Kodiak Island Borough, I supervised three. At the Kenai Peninsula Borough, I supervised 24.
Okay. Thank you. Christina, I know, and...
Can you tell, can you remind Christina?
Why don't you all answer that question, then? Christina, how many people are in the department and that you supervise?
Right now, I oversee 150.8. We have a .8 individual.
Magic of government accounting.
But most of my experience, it's been about 100.
Okay, thank you.
And, well, I guess the largest group I have had to manage is our staff at the restaurant, and it has ranged, depending on the economy, from 12 to 18. Fortunately, right now, we're healthier than we have been.
Good.
Yeah. And they are primarily very bright, very mobile people. A lot of them are students. And we are extraordinarily proud of the fact that we have amazing retention. We have people who've stayed with us through their entire college career, five, six, even seven years. And that in a casual dining restaurant is rare, and we're very, very proud of it.
Thank you.
I just had a quick follow-on, probably for all three candidates, maybe just take, you know, 30 seconds or a minute to respond, but I'm curious, I heard one of you talked to and just touched on it, but what's your experience, certainly it follows, I guess, into the real property, maybe into personal property, in the rural agricultural property arena? So I guess Christina, you had the first question, so we'll just go down the road again.
You may be referring to properties like Williamson Land Act properties, and those, the valuations of those properties do fall under my direction. And so we have about 1,400 parcels under the Williamson Land Act. And recently, we compiled the information. There's a new GASP-77 requirement that requires us to compute the tax abatement amounts. So as far as valuation processes, way back in the day, when I worked for Placer County, I was supervised staff that computed the Williamson Land Act valuations. I've never personally, myself, actually enrolled a value for Williamson Land Act, but I have reviewed them, and I've actually examined the procedures that are in place right now for when properties are coming out of the Williamson Land Act, because they're treated specially, and you have to be sure and calculate assessments correctly. Otherwise, taxpayers could be overcharged or undercharged.
Okay. And not all rural agricultural properties are in the Williamson Act, but...
Correct.
A significant portion of that, okay?
Yes.
My experience with agricultural values grew, of course, out of doing residential appraisals. And you'll find often that the largest, loveliest homes in the Central Valley are on substantial acreage with growing improvements. I had to familiarize myself, because those growing improvement values had to be extracted, banks are not going to loan on your grapes in a res loan, I had to learn about valuation, market value of growing improvements, so that I could extract it accurately. I also, in the course of looking at comparable sales, if I had to go to Napa for a similar residential property, I had to understand what the difference was between grape area one and grape area 12. I also began, again, with growing improvements, recognized that planting patterns for almonds vary, and so productivity varies. In other words, I had to become familiar with the vernacular, and you don't want to sound like an idiot when you're talking to a farmer, or he will write you off immediately. So in that, in that respect, I do have a lot of general knowledge about farm value. I understand how much it costs to put a well in, because every farmer I ever met wants to make sure I've heard it, but so-cost approach, but generally speaking, it stems from my experience of living in those farm counties and appraising homes.
Okay, thanks. Tom?
As you might surmise, there's not an extensive amount of agricultural production in Alaska.
Waving off the bears, I think.
In Kodiak, there was a bison ranching operation, but we do have, in Alaska, in the state of Alaska, we do have laws for conservation valuation. For properties that are subject to a conservation easement, they must be valued that way for property tax purposes. There is also a provision for farm use property, that if the operator meets a certain threshold of their gross annual income from the farm operations, then the land must be valued as agricultural land. As to personal property, not a lot.
Okay. Well, thank you all for responding to that. Okay, unless there are any other questions, go to the next one. Ms. Peters.
Thank you. If you were appointed to the interim assessor's position, how would you lead the assessor's office to uphold the public's trust? I guess that goes to Ms. Monday.
Shortly after I started at the Stanislaw County Assessor's Office, my husband and I bought a little house. Armed with my brand-new appraiser knowledge, I walked up to my supervisor and said to him, "I need a new assessed value on my house." If cash to seller is the best definition of market value, then we need to review this." And I explained to him that the seller had paid $4,000 in closing, which went toward our down payment. And so the net, even though the contract said the sale price was $80,000, the net cash to seller was $76,000. And he looked at me and said, "Very good argument. If you were any other taxpayer, you'd probably get your reduction, but you work here." Immediately became very clear to me, the assessor's office can't tolerate even the appearance, no matter how innocent or justified, of any inequality in the application of the law. I believe that the staff, the existing staff in the assessor's office is intelligent, competent, and capable. Every experience I've had with them personally has been above average. These are bright people. What they lack right now, perhaps, is some confidence, some morale, and they need to be encouraged to stretch to that highest point. Taxpayers, write your paycheck. But beyond that, the assessor's office has to be beyond reproach. If the public doesn't trust our assessments, they're valueless. And so my whole process there would be to impress upon the staff, who I believe are probably already there, that this is a matter of trust, that they have an obligation. It's this public service in its most basic form, fairness, equity, and clarity, and dealing with the public with pride and respect.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Monday. Mr. Anderson?
I think fundamentally, the most important thing in the operation of the assessor's office is that you have a complete and accurate database of all taxable property within the jurisdiction. When people come in to ask about their property records or their property assessments, obviously and understandably, people are upset if their records are not correct and not accurate. So I think that's fundamental. I think also being transparent. I'm sure that the assessor's office here has all their information, and their data is available on the website, so people can look it up and verify that it is correct and accurate. And then I think it's important to have a well-trained staff that understand the laws that they operate under, they understand appraisal principles, and when they get inquiries from the public, they're able to respond with accurate and clear answers, and explain exactly how the assessor's office operates.
Thank you.
Christine?
Thank you. I agree with both Margot and Tom, and I'd also like to add that I believe that public likes to be treated with respect when they contact the assessor's office, and they like to be, they like for us to be accessible to them, to be responsive, and the golden rule applies, you know, treat others as you expect to be treated. And I think that we can continue to examine our processes to improve. I have several ideas for that, and I think we should always be open to listening to the public, and whatever input they can give us to help us improve, I welcome it. That's it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions of any of the candidates on this question? All right. Then we'll turn to Ms. Frost.
And I believe this question is directed to you, Tom. Would you please provide an example of your work experience that illustrates your ability to effectively manage the administrative functions expected of the interim assessor?
Well, as for a specific example, I think I would point to my experience at the Kodiak Island Borough. When I took over that position, basically, it didn't function. It couldn't even operate as an assessor's office should. So I did an evaluation of what I could clearly see was necessary. We needed systems that would allow us to do all the functions that we were supposed to, and so we issued the RFP. Of course, I had to go to the borough assembly to request the funds, and it was a substantial amount, but I convinced them of the need, and we went forward and successfully implemented that new CAMA system. So I think I have the experience over 20 years, 22 years in this profession. I know how the assessor's office is supposed to function in basically all assets, in all facets, and I know how to evaluate the operations comprehensively and identify areas that do need correction or improvement.
Questions of Tom on this one? I just had one follow-on, Tom, so just, and again, I know that in your background information, you explained you understood some differential between Alaska and California as related to some of the voter-approved propositions, some of them now, you know, well over 25 years in place. Is there anything that you would offer as a part of, from the administrative side of that, you think would challenge the assessor in that role? From your own experience, any distinctions you might want to point out, so?
I agree, and I acknowledge that I've never worked within, you know, the laws of the state of California. I do understand how Prop 13 and Prop 8 apply. When I, when I was getting prepared to come for this interview, if I may follow up just quickly...
Sure, yeah, yeah.
I read the review of assessment operations that was issued, the report that was issued by the Board of Equalization in March of 2016. I thought it was interesting to note that the Board of Equalization stated that the Sacramento County Assessor's Office is in compliance with the statistical requirements as far as the performance of the market values, the market value assessments. The median ratio was 99.98%, and the measure of dispersion, the measure of total dispersion was 0.46%. It's pretty clear to me that that's the result of Prop 13, that when there is a supplemental event, the assessed value is marked to the sales price, basically, because those statistics are not achievable with a market, with an independent valuation model. I've worked with many. The standards promulgated by the International Association of Assessing Officers say that the assessment level should be between 90 and 110%, and for an urban or suburban residential model, the COD, or the coefficient of dispersion, should be less than 10. So I'd be interested to see here how the actual market models perform when you compare the independent estimates of value with the sales prices, rather than the assessed values that go on the rolls that are simply marked to the sales price. That would tell me how well the market models in Sacramento County really perform, so that we can compare those with the indexed base year values to see whether Prop 13 or Prop 8 would apply.
Okay, yeah. Thank you for that follow-on response. Okay, all right. If, no further questions of Tom? Next, Christine? Same question.
Okay.
Administrative management question.
So I think the best example of this is probably one of the most important functions of the assessor's office, and that is the production of the tax roll. And to produce a tax roll that is accurate and timely, and timely, when I say timely, I mean every piece of work is done by the close of the roll, and that has been one of my main focuses since I've been assistant assessor. This will be year two, under my direction, to complete the role timely. When we're completing the role timely, districts can prepare their budgets based on revenues, and the money is more, feels more secure, because we don't spend the summertime adjusting the tax roll. And as Mr. Anderson mentioned, we have a 99, over 99% accuracy rate, according to the board's measurement, and this is very good news for us, because that ensures our funding, our reimbursement funding. So, you know, we like that number. It also is a measure of, to us, the Board of Equalization is sort of an overseer, and we're always trying to comply with their rules and regulations to ensure that the properties are being appraised appropriately, and part of their function is to do this statewide. So we feel very proud of the fact that we could achieve a rate as high as 99%. And so along with producing an assessment role, it's accurate according to the standards of the Board of Equalization, and I believe that for all concerned, and citizens of the county, and the functions of the county, in order to produce the revenues, I would think that we would all be very pleased with that. And so I do believe that is one of the most important functions of the department, and it's been a very important role for me to play. That's it.
All right. Any questions of Christina on that response? Okay, done. Margot.
Thank you. Getting the rollout on time is the goal of every assessor's office. It's the big elephant in the room, starting on January 1. And I think that the management involved in this requires that, first of all, you know, you divide and conquer. You make sure that you have adequate resources applied in the areas that need them. Sometimes it's kind of like whack-a-mole, when suddenly personal property will pop up, and you'll have to run and take care of that for a while. But managing your staff accurately, which I think has been the assistant assessors' purview, is critical. You don't get it out on time, you don't get, as you said, that's their job, is to generate this revenue for the whole county to function. And so this accurate, timely role is a key job. Everything that needs to be done has to be done to produce that. And that, again, is largely staff management, resource management, building a budget at the beginning of the year that is going to support you to get through that. And in my work experience in private business, I would have to suggest to you that surviving a recession in a retail business is a roller coaster. Unlike government, there's no budget for the year. It's what came in. How many pizzas did you sell yesterday? Can you make payroll? Can you pay your taxes? Can you do all those things? This requires fast footwork, keeping lots of things floating under various pressures. This requires fast-foot work, keeping lots of things floating under various pressures, and understanding that in order to survive, you have got to meet obligations on time and in full. And I think that kind of management experience in that kind of fireworks environment is valuable experience to bring to, to any management position.
Okay. Any follow-on questions for Margot? Okay. Mr. Speaker, did you want to ask a question? You want me to roll it into the closing question?
Roll it.
Okay. All right. All right. So again, thank you for all your free responses. We're going to come to kind of the closing question. And in addition to what's on the sheet before you, but some of the comments that certainly each of you have made in your, you know, respective experience and so forth, you've talked about folks that you've managed, as well as how you oversee the role, certainly in whatever role you've served in. I guess part of the question would be, in a setting where you have, certainly in the public setting, where you have representative employees that have bargaining units, the assessor is an elected role, and there's civil service protection and so forth, how do you motivate and, or how would you inspire and motivate and see to it, as somebody mentioned about getting the role done, making sure that certain tasks get attended to, and that you, you know, again, as the leader in that particular realm, how would you see your, your role and functionality in that? So I guess we'd go back to, to, well, now we're going to go to Christina because in closing, and then also, in addition to that, then any qualifications for the interim assessor position that you'd like to share with the public and board of supervisors? So kind of a two-pronged question, one just managing workforce. And each of you kind of touched on that, but certainly in the role as the assessor. And then anything you'd like to add as part of the closing comments? So Christina.
Okay. Well, I believe that all the employees should feel valued and that we should be open to listening to their concerns. I believe we should build trust, trust, and with that, I mean, we should engage them more frequently and be listening to what they have to say with the point of view of trying to solve issues that arise. So when everyone in the room wants to solve the problem, it becomes a little bit easier to solve the problem when the intentions are to do so. And I think that as management, by making ourselves available more frequently to listen and then try to come up with a plan, we have various unions that represent the employees. And so I believe they all, you know, need to be given the respect and time they deserve. And I believe the management of our department does want to work well with the union employees and all employees. We do care about them deeply. And so we do want to make efforts to ensure that they do like coming to work, that they feel value in what they do, that they are recognized for what they do, and that they're contributing.
Okay. And did you, any else you wanted to add in the qualifications?
A closing?
Yeah, a closing.
Can I do a closing?
Yeah, a closing, yes.
I have a closing.
Okay.
In closing, I have achieved success throughout my career because I have focused on the mission and goals of the organization. I have always sought out innovative solutions to challenging problems to achieve those goals with maximum efficiency. Regardless of the task or challenge, I have always established benchmarks of performance and standards of excellence. I have never sought to maintain the status quo because I believe that an organization that does not evolve will not thrive. I am here today to express my commitment to operationally maximize the assessment role to support the services and strategic initiatives serving the needs of the citizens of Sacramento County, and I respectfully request your vote of confidence. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Christine. Okay. Margot, we'll turn to you, kind of as a kind of two-pronged question. You certainly can give us a closing, but you want to maybe respond to the first, first part of the question.
Well, I think you start, in terms of, of the staff, with listening to them. And then creating a situation where they are empowered to use their initiative, their imagination, their problem-solving skills. Because in my experience, when you have capable staff, as the assessor's office does, if they are allowed to solve problems themselves, to put forward suggestions and, and be listened to and with respect, that their pride in their work grows and their ability to do their job well grows. So that would be, you know, very much what you were saying. That's where you have to go. You've got amazing people working there. And to underestimate their ability to not listen carefully and thoughtfully to their union representatives is a serious mistake. It's a waste of resources. As for a closing statement.
Yes.
I have a strong appraisal background and a good understanding of California property tax law. My broad and varied background gives me a fresh perspective. And I've been forced to learn how to solve problems quickly, to think on my feet, and to meet my obligations in full. I know no one in the assessor's office. I have no loyalties or bias. I have no agenda, no political ambition. If I am your choice for this position, I will not run for election in 2018. My goal would be to help what I assume is a talented and capable staff to restore the morale and confidence they need, and in whatever way I can, to leave this office ready for a new elected assessor.
Okay. Thank you, Margot. Okay. Tom?
Thank you. My management style is low-key and cooperative. I think that employees respond better to encouragement than to threats. I allow my division managers and lead workers, and I expect them to do their jobs, and I hold them accountable. But what I can promise you is that I take full responsible for, full responsibility for every product and every service that comes out of my department. And you will never hear me complain about or blame someone else that works under me for a problem that, that occurs in my department. It's all on me because I'm in charge of it all. As for something else I might say about my qualifications, I recognize that I'm at a bit of a disadvantage here because I've never worked under the laws of California. I've never worked here in Sacramento County. But let me just review a few things that I plan to do over the next 18 months if I'm hired for this position. In the first week, I would meet with all supervisory staff individually to review all department operations in order to gain a complete understanding of all staff responsibilities, department functions, and systems. In the first month, I would reach out to all staff for feedback and suggestions on ways that department's operations and policies may be improved and problems that may need to be addressed. I would also reach out to the other county assessors within the state of California for advice and counsel in administering California property tax laws. In the first three months, I would work in the office and the field with appraisal staff to make myself very familiar with Sacramento County geography, market areas, cities, neighborhoods, property types and locations, high-value and special-use properties, and all relevant details of the area's real estate markets. I would review the March 2016 Assessment Practices Survey report issued by the California Board of Equalization to make sure all deficiencies identified have been addressed and corrected. I would review the collective bargaining agreement between Sacramento County and the union that represents the employees to make sure the department's promotion practices, handling of complaints, and management policies are in complete compliance. And over 18 months, I would review all instruction, instructions and guidelines in the California Assessor's Handbook and compare with the department's policies and practices to identify any needed improvements or corrections. And I will review market models and field data manuals and property description standards to ensure, ensure uniformity, accuracy, equitable assessment, and excellent quality control.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, thank you to each and all of our three candidates. Let me ask, board members, was there anything else that, in the course of the interview that you'd like to ask of our candidates? Ms. Frost?
Ms. Monday, you mentioned that you would not run for office. I'm just curious if the other two would or would not. I'm assuming you would, but...
I'm appointed, I will run for office, I guess.
I haven't even considered it. I've only focused on the coming 18 months.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Well, very, very good. We certainly thank each of you for, I think, the thought. This is not an easy process, and, you know, it's probably a little different than interviews that, for any particular purposes you may have had in the past, where it's just a very public setting. But nonetheless, you all did, did very well, and certainly appreciate your competency and your responsiveness to the questions. So with that, again, any additional guidance before board goes into deliberation from council?
No. Did you have any speakers?
I didn't have anybody signed up, but if there's anyone who wishes to speak?
I didn't see any sign-ups list.
Oh, I'm sorry. We, but...
Or right there.
Yeah. You're welcome to come, come forward. You can, you know, just identify yourself and fill it out after you're done. So, yeah, I would have called upon, I didn't have that in front of me, so I shouldn't have made that announcement. But yes, so just, yeah, you can fill it out when you're done. Go ahead and identify yourself and just, once you're done speaking, you can fill it out. So if anybody else wishes to do that, any of the audience members?
Oh, I'm sorry. Being a short person, I don't know how this works. So my name is Anna Mollander, and I'm a resident of District 2 and a property owner there. And I stand today, I, I asked Margot Monday to apply for this position. And I did so after reading the accounts in the B. I'm concerned about our assessor's department, and I'm concerned about the faith in our elected officials in this county. It's very important to me. It's very important to me that the assessor's office has the utmost faith from community members. Oddly enough, I, I've never once received a text message or an email about the assessor's office until that morning when the article came out. And there were a lot of them that day. And I think people are concerned in the community. They are concerned, they want to reset, they want some time to take a look at the assessor's office to, to understand what is happening. And I know that this, this board has been very diligent in what your duties are. I, I think of Margot as being a natural leader, and she, it's why I asked her to please do this. Her ethics and her warmth and her abilities are endless, in my opinion. In my experience with the assessor's office, I myself have had a wonderful experience with the assessor's office. And in fact, just this week, I had an issue that was answered immediately. But that only came after someone else on a nonprofit board I was dealing with had spent weeks trying to resolve that same issue. I happen to know the language and the words that needed to be asked, but this person who didn't have a law degree didn't know how to ask the questions. And that's something I think we need to focus on from the assessor's department, to make sure that the assessor can talk to everybody in the community and not just the people who can speak the language. So I stand strongly in support of Margot Monday, and I hope you will consider her for this position. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Anna, and thank you for your letter as well. I know it was attached in Ms. Monday's packet. So you can fill that out and give it to the clerk when you have a chance. Anyone else wish to address the board? Sir, come forward and then just give us your name and fill out a form as well when you're done.
My name is Fred Monday, and Margot's husband. She probably quaking in her shoes when she saw me get up to talk to you. But the other night, when we downloaded the qualifications of the other candidate, she looked at me and she said, "I don't stand a chance here. They have far more appraisal and assessor experience than I do." My only response to that was, "How long have you been married, Margot?" And she said, "50 years." I said, "You've been married to me for 50 years, which is more than their combined years of experience in appraisal and assessing." But there are really three things that you need to know about Margot. One, she can herd chickens. Okay? Secondly, she evokes respect and loyalty from her coworkers and her peers just so easily. And thirdly, there is no one more honest with a high level of integrity at Margot than Margot does. Over the 50 years of marriage, every time I've tried to kind of cut a corner, maybe cheat on taxes, can't do it. You won't find a better candidate for leading your assessor's office than Margot. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Okay. Any other speakers? I got two other folks in the audience.
I can tell you, that's better than my wife would ever say about me.
Not saying a word.
No, no. Well, very complimentary. Again, thank both of you for your comments. And again, all right, so with no other comments, then it's back to the board here to weigh in. And obviously, we have three candidates before us and for our consideration here today. So if you want to punch up, you know, we can just kind of go down the road, however you want to do it. So, Mr. Kennedy?
I'd just like clarification, so just so we're all clear what's happening here, since this is a unusual circumstance. So we're going to kind of free-for-all, make comments and type of thing, and then there has, is there a motion? I mean, is, looking at staff.
Yeah, so we'd have to make a motion and a vote if you so choose to, so today. If not, you can defer your decision to the meeting in July, but you would have to go through the same deliberation process.
Yeah, that's, okay. So, and is it following typical Roberts rules? If there's, you know, a motion made, we don't need a second because it's a nomination, right?
Right.
But is there a substitute motion if somebody has somebody else, just so we know the ground rules?
Yes, it would be the same, same as Roberts rules.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Krista, you'll stay on target. We, you know...
We don't exactly follow, follow Roberts rules, but yes, basically, it's the same process as you would use considering any other item before the board. It's just a little stranger.
Yeah. That's my question.
Okay. All right. Very good. Any other questions about process before we jump in here? Okay. If not, who wants to start out? Thoughts? Okay, Mr. Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. And I appreciate all three candidates taking the time to be here. I think it's clear that from your testimony, you're all very thoughtful people and have given this a lot of thought and soul-searching to get to this, this point. So I do appreciate you taking the time and energy to put yourself in this position. Ms. Monday, I think that the strong suit I see from you today is you've got, you've got a terrific sense of humor.
Me, I just only buy her husband's sense of humor.
That's right. It seems to be a family affair.
Laugh a minute.
That's right. And Mr. Anderson, I, I think some of the preciseness to your responses is well-taken. And you've certainly, for someone that's not familiar with California assessment appraisal protocols and practices, you've clearly done your homework, and I think that's my takeaway from much of your testimony this afternoon. And then Ms. Nguyen, I, I think it's pretty clear that you've prepared yourself very well for this interview. I think, given the fact that you've been as thoughtful as the other two candidates and given the experience of being where you are with the Sacramento Assessor's Office. And I think there is something, some value and something to be said for the order of magnitude of resources that you manage. And that, I think, for me at least, it comes into play in terms of my calculus about who's going to be prepared to lead this organization, at least for the next, next year or so, or year and a half. So I, I've been weighing that heavily, as well as your responses to, to the questions. So I, I don't know if I'm prepared to say anything further, other than I want to hear from the rest of the board, but I may make a motion at the appropriate time.
Okay. All right. Mr. Kennedy?
I actually echo everything that Mr. Serna said, particularly the sense of humor part. I, I do want to say that I'm extremely impressed with the three of you because any job interview is a very stressful situation, there's no question. But this is a bizarre situation in which you're being interviewed on television, which is a great souvenir for later.
It's broadcast on the World Wide Web. They can watch you in England and Australia.
Exactly. In front of, you know, an audience of people, so, and, and, you know, it's intimidating to be speaking to, you know, up on the dais and all that. So you all handled yourself extremely well. I don't know that I would have done nearly as well as the three of you did. I, as I said, I would echo and say that we have three candidates who I think all three have very, you know, clear strengths and very different... have very, you know, clear strengths and very different strengths and experience and direct experience. And let me say this, that I, I do know that Ms. Nguyen's experience in Sacramento County would be daunting if I were the two of you. There's no question. We've all been to job interviews, you know, but that, I did not come into this, and I'm sure my colleagues did not come into this with a set mindset that that's the only thing. But it does weigh. There's no question about that. So I'll be interested to hear what my colleagues have to say as well, but, you know, kudos to all three of you for being here and doing a great job.
Okay. Ms. Nguyen?
There we go. Thank you. I also commend all three of you, particularly someone from the private sector, to come in and interview in a situation like this, not only on television, but with elected officials and we're going to talk about you in front of you. I, it's very strange for us too, so I think you're all very brave.
Sounds like an episode of The Voice or something.
Yeah. What is it, America's?
Careful, we turned around.
Got talent or something like that?
We've got talent, right here in Northern. Yes, we do.
Mr. Anderson, I, I, you know, I envy you living in Alaska. I think it's a wonderful place to be and visit. I, I wish that you'd had experience at a slightly larger county and because I think you have a lot of skills. Ms. Nguyen, we haven't met before. I'm impressed with your experience and the number of years as an assessor and the CBRE background as a broker and your training and experience and the level of, number of people you supervise. And Ms. Monday, I came from the private sector, so I recognize and appreciate all the things you said about customer service and, and have lived through a recession myself in the private sector and know how you have to juggle. And every morning, you wake up in the morning and say, "How am I going to, how am I going to make all these kids' mortgage payments today?" How can, you know, that kind of thing. So whoever wins this, I think they should consider hiring you as a consulting quality control officer. So those are my thoughts.
Okay. Ms. Ross?
I want to thank all of you for coming here and applying. Like my colleagues, this is a little bit strange, but I think I'm going to dive in and just kind of share a little bit about what my thoughts were, not only in reading your, your packet that you sent to us, but also in the interview. I felt like, I feel like all three of you would be an asset to our assessor's office and if any one of you had to do it, you could probably figure it out. So I think you're all very special in different ways. There were some things that stood out to me. I'll start with you, Mr. Anderson. Your resume was extremely well-written. I thought your letters were articulate. Your experience over 22 years is broad and, and over 24 people. The fact that you had a variety of experience, so you'd had been in different situations, gave me the impression that you could be flexible as a leader and go in and try to fix things. You made comments about how you had made things better, left things better than where you came. You had management as a supervisor, a variety of experience. Your degree in economics, I thought, was important. And the fact that you were familiar with RFP, budget strat, budget, strategic planning, publications, co-op with other agencies, I was impressed with all that. The, you know, if, if there was going to be pros and cons, the, the challenges that, that came to my mind were around your experience in California. Personal experience with property appraisal, not having a valid appraiser license in California isn't a huge obstacle. I didn't really see that as an obstacle, but it's just the fact that it would take you a little time to come up to speed, to get acquainted with the county. And for the position that we're hiring, it's for an 18-month, it's for a short term, so continuity is a consideration in my mind. And you would need to relocate because you're out of state and the fact that you were working with a, a smaller agency, but that's not to say that I don't think that you could be an effective, effective, because I think you could be. Mrs. Monday, you are a delight. I'm inspired just listening to you. You make me laugh and that, you make people happy when you talk. I don't know if you know that, but I was really impressed with your inspirational style of communication, the fact that you're an inspirational leader, obviously, and a survivor. I do understand, being, being an entrepreneur most of my adult life, the challenges that come with, with that. And, and so I respect you for that. I was impressed with your experience in Stanislaus at the assessor's office. And you had personal property appraisal experience and experience with multiple types of properties and management skills. The challenge that I ran into or the cons, the pros and the cons were, came down to your, you've been out of the appraisal business for a while, not to say that you couldn't get up to speed, but that did cross my mind. 10 years, lots happened. I was in the mortgage business during the downturn. So as you, you well, we, we all know appraisal changed a great deal over the last 10 years, 10 or 15 years. And no current appraisal cert, I know you could get that in a flash. So, you know, those were some of the thoughts that were going through my mind. Ms. Nguyen, I don't know if it's Ms. or Mrs., I'll call it same, Ms. Nguyen. I was impressed with your resume and your time with the county. Your, the fact that you've been with the county for a while, you're the assistant assessor over 100 people, so you, you don't have to come up to speed because you're already here and you're already over a lot of it. It would just be a matter of, you know, in my mind, I'm sensing continuity. You are well-versed in the laws in California, the Williamson Act, agricultural lands. You have a degree, you know, in agriculture and managerial. You have management experience and over 27 years as a licensed appraisal, appraiser. All those things popped out. I, I like the way you present yourself also. I felt all three of you presented yourself very well. As far as cons, this is where I, I couldn't think of any. And that's not to say there aren't any. I couldn't think of, there wasn't anything that popped out that, that said this would be, make it an uphill climb or be an extra thing you would have to do to fit in and fill this role for 18 months. So those are my comments and I'm not, I think I'll just leave it at that until I listen to the rest of my colleagues. Thank you.
Okay, good. Well, thanks to each of my colleagues and I would just, again, certainly would echo a number of things that you've heard from my colleagues, certainly on the compliment side for, I think, one, your willingness to be considered for this position, the fact that under circumstances is, again, a bit stressful and probably, you know, just having to stare at us for the last hour is stressful in itself. But I, but I, but I would say that I think it's a high compliment to Sacramento County that the three of you not only, you know, seek this position, but I think have prepared yourselves. You bring your life experiences, you bring a package of, of, I think, qualifications that, you know, distinguish yourselves in, in, in some ways, but also I think some very striking similarities. And like my colleagues having read the resumes and certainly the letters of recommendation, hearing from folks in the audience, all that input, certainly for me, I trust my colleagues as a decision-maker, certainly on this point, but on many others, that's all part of the fabric that we have to examine. And I think kind of being up close though and personal in the sense that we were having this interview really brings to light things you can't see on paper and even, you know, commentary from those who may be judging you as a peer or supporting you or, or such. And again, I just, again, I really find it, that it speaks very highly of Sacramento County as an organization, but certainly as a jurisdiction, that the three of you, coming from your life experiences and certainly some more internal than external, that you would seek this out. And so, again, I just want to start with that because it was prepared to me in the interviews, right from the first question, right through to your closing comments, that each of you had given much thought to this. You came here prepared. You recognized your strengths and limitations. You were very honest. And I can tell you that each of you said it in different ways and some of you stressed in your comments a number of times that importance of integrity and honesty and certainly the role of the assessor, but in any public servant is so very, very important. And, and each of you, I see that certainly in your life's work thus far. And again, I think you just further put that as a stamp certainly on yourself, on your experience, but on, on why you want to serve in this capacity. And as I waited out too, I, you know, again, some of the things that you each keyed on, certainly the administrative aspects of overseeing a staff, whether it be large or small, whether it be in the private sector or in the public sector, there are certain techniques, there are certain unique, you know, uniquities to, to doing that in, in the public sector. But how you motivate people, and that's part of the question that I asked, but also the morale, but then that responsibility that we all have as certainly public servants to, to the broader public. And, you know, part of that is accessibility, part of that is obviously making sure the work gets done, it gets done timely, done in a way that's, that's accurate. Each of you stressed that. And so I, I, I come away with certainly the belief that for whatever comparisons and whatever decision we make today, that I would have confidence that, that each of you, whether you were experienced in this role or stepped into it from, you know, from a different vantage point, that you would quickly get up to speed and serve with honesty and integrity. And so if nothing else, if you take that away, whether you're selected today or not by this board, I, I say that with all sincerity, that, that, I was very impressed by that. And that's important. It's important in the role that you're seeking, but also in public service. So I think some of the, the things that were pointed out, I would note obviously that certainly Christina, with your experience, obviously you've worked in the office for 16 years. You, you know, have served in the acting capacity now for, you know, a number of weeks. I think your experience certainly in Sacramento County, again, in, in currency with that, you know, speak highly to your commitment to public service, but also obviously to your, to your work and to, you know, your knowledge of the office. And so that certainly is a, is a, is a real strength. To, to Tom, I think, again, you have, you know, similar strengths. Obviously, you noted that your experience in California is limited, but I think you outlined very clearly that you would, you know, work very hard from day one to week one to month three to 18 months and laid that out as to how you would approach that. And I think that, you know, is very logical. And I think presented a lot of thought on your part about what skills that you bring from your previous experience in 22 years in work. And Margot, I guess we're just saying that, again, certainly your sense of humor, but I think that, you know, really belies your qualifications as well. I mean, obviously, you had a short, shorter time in, in, in Stanislaus and San Joaquin Counties in the, in the public realm, but your work in the private sector with appraising and certainly your work in private business and managing the staff, again, I think you, that, that experience really is very important and, and would, you know, would serve you well because, again, as each of you spoke to it, you know, you speak with confidence and with your capabilities. And I, I get no sense from any one of the three that you would shy away from tackling difficult issues, but certainly being accountable, both for your own actions in this role and your current work, but also then for the staff that would be working, you know, under your leadership. And so I see those strengths and, and again, it, the, on paper, it might like, it doesn't look to be as close a call as it is after I've done the interviews, but certainly I'm prepared to make a decision here today and would just compliment all of you and again, recognizing that you each bring your unique strengths and, you know, some limitations. And I think recognizing this as an 18-month appointment, we have to, you know, make a decision here and we will do that shortly, but I want to compliment each of you and, and thank you for, for putting yourselves through this today. And one of you will get selected and a couple of you will maybe be a bit disappointed, but not because you didn't do well in, not on the interview, but certainly bring a great deal of experience to, to your desire to serve in this capacity. So, that's what I meant. Okay. Mr. Serna?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I don't know if there's any further comments or questions of the candidates, but if there are none, I'd like to move the nomination of Christina Nguyen.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to make the appointment of Christina Nguyen as the, to the interim assessor position. Do we have any other comments on the, on the motion? If not, then please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Congratulations, Christina. Thank you, Margot. Thank you, Tom. And...
Yeah, thank you all for being here today. It was, it was interesting for us too.
And Christina, you may want to keep their resumes.
Both of you. An integrity officer over here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I did just want to, I just want to remind you that as Mr. Devine commented at the beginning, that obviously this is subject to the normal pre-employment.
Right. There's a, yeah, there is, yeah, so there is a...
Pre-employment.
Pre-employment there, so there, I mean, that includes what, Mr. Devine?
Well, that would include, well, since she's an internal candidate and we have access to all her information, so it should be a pretty quick process.
Okay.
So I would imagine the appointment to be made by the next payroll, which would be the 25th of June.
Okay. All right. And just, anything the candidates or the appointee would like to, to make at this point? Any comments?
I'd just like to say I've really enjoyed the process and these are some very fine individuals that came today.
Tom, anything you want to say?
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
And thank you, Anna, and thank you, Fred.
Sell some pizzas.
Okay. Again, thank you all so very much. We appreciate the time spent here today and safe travels, Tom. And certainly, Margot, thank you very much. Good luck on the, this is, thank you. Thanks again to our folks who sat through the interviews and for your very heartfelt and sincere comments to this board. Okay, that concludes that item. And with that...
One more.
Yeah, we have one more. Yes, we do. And we have some folks in the audience on this, so. And it is exactly 2:30. Let me time that.
Okay, so for item number four, this is the resolution appointing director to Slough House Resource Conservation District.
Just by way of introduction on this item, we did have the submittal. Through the process of filling a vacancy on the Slough House RCD Resource Conservation District Board of Directors, came to us on, on consent calendar a week ago. I asked it to be put over. We did have some comments from a couple of parties who I think were interested. One had sought in, at least in one case, they had sought the nomination. And there was, I guess, with some discussion, I did get, reached out to the district about expansion of the board and how associate directorships function. And again, the district has gone through their process and so in light of that, I thought it'd be helpful for this board, since we are the appointing authority, they do not conduct the election for that district and a lot of other smaller districts, this is not that unique. And because I think certainly some of the concerns that have been expressed, at least through my office, about, you know, the opportunity to, to serve in that capacity and the people who do serve as elected, I thought it'd be a good idea before we take this up, but to at least have the district explain, because I know they've been talking about board expansion, about associate directorships and those roles and have had in the last go-round, at least I know, four candidates, of which they nominated Mr. Silva. And I, that's, that's what's before us. And so with that, I guess I would just open, you know, and invite somebody from the district to come forward. Mr. Gill, do you want to offer anything? Okay. So I know I talked to Amanda. I don't know if there's anybody here from the district. I see Herb's in the audience. If anybody wanted to add anything to the appointment process, because there was, and then I'll take others who may. Amanda, you want to come forward? And I know you actually had this up on your agenda, I guess, so last Friday, so the discussion about, and I would just also note that in the last... about, and I would just also note that in the last recommendation, we did, it was not a unanimous vote amongst the board members. And I've understood from different parties that there's some difference about expansion or not, and, you know, and again, I don't think it doesn't reflect on the candidate that's before us in any way.
But nonetheless, they did nominate this person.
They did, yeah, Mr. Silva. And that's not so much in dispute, I think, it's kind of where, where we go. And there may be others who want to weigh in about the board's direction on certain matters. And Amanda, you just tell us your name and your role with the district, so, please.
Definitely. My name is Amanda Watson. I work as a secretary and project manager for the Slough House Resource Conservation District. We at the district are entering into a new role as a groundwater sustainability agency. And with that new project that we are holding at the Slough House RCD, we've received a lot more public interest in the board, which we're grateful for. And this is the first time that, of my knowledge and looking through the records, that there's actually been multiple, this many multiple candidates coming to the Resource Conservation District Board. And with that knowledge, over the last several months, I believe the conversation started in January, we started talking about formalizing our associate director policy, which we don't really have a specific policy, but associate directors in the district is a process and a, a tool that the district has used for many years, actually, I believe from its inception, to bring in people of the community when there is additional interest, to serve as an associate director. And then most of the associate directors then move into board member positions. So it's a way of, you know, increasing the learning curve of the community of how the district functions. So over the last several months and at this last, the, I believe, the May board meeting, we had, we hosted an hour-long discussion that was open to the board and the public to hold basically an open discussion with everybody to talk about either expanding the board, which RCDs can expand, the boards can be five, seven, or nine members. So expanding the board or finalize, or formalizing the associate director policy. And it's definitely not an either-or. And currently, the board has not made a decision about expanding the board, but we have, at the last board meeting, we looked at a draft policy that was drafted by staff, myself, based on other RCD policy from across the state. Because of comments from both the board members and also the public brought up some good points regarding that policy, we decide, the board decided to make some amendments over the next month and then revisit at the next meeting and hopefully pass or at least consider a associate director policy. So throughout the process of, of the appointment, we, the board has discussed multiple times about bringing associate directors on. No decision yet has been made about the expansion of the board either. So if there's any, any other questions regarding Slough House RCD or the process we've gone through, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay. Well, thanks, Amanda, for the summary. And I guess, and I had good fortune to be at your meeting in May because we were recognizing, obviously, the family of Bill Mosher and certainly one of the other retiring directors. And so got a chance to actually see some of the candidate interviews that were being conducted that day and the discussion that took place. And obviously, there were subsequent discussion by the, by the board. Maybe that was the April meeting, but at any rate, the, and I know that, obviously, the board certainly is, is the decider of whether you choose to expand or not. And I think it was important because certainly as supervisor of a district in which the RCD, you know, largely lies, some of that being in Supervisor Frost's district, getting, you know, some feedback and having heard that, that was important, certainly as this board makes the appointments. Because again, we don't dictate to the district as to whether it expands or not and certainly don't control, you know, the rules by which associate directorships are applied or made. But certainly have an interest in it. And I think, to your point, I think with additional interest amongst, you know, residents of the, of the area, and I think the work that's been done by the RCD to, I think, engage in the groundwater discussions and certainly other activities that reflect on, you know, the area that the, that the district serves, that has, I think, heightened awareness, which is a good thing. It's heightened the interest. And I think it's been obviously borne out to some degree by the interest in serving on the board. And again, we have that before us today. So I don't know if there's any other questions by board members relative. So let me be clear then, so your discussion about the associate directorship continues as it relates to how that would be outlined?
Yeah, both of the discussions are continuing items since our, I believe, our May meeting, I believe. We were continuing talking about both, either expansion of the board and an associate director policy and formalizing that process.
Okay. All right. We'll maybe stand by. One other speaker signed up and if there's any other questions. Okay, great. Thanks, Amanda. Okay, Carrie Schmitz. Carrie.
Good afternoon, chair and totally members of the board. Thank you for your time. I'm going to be very quick. I'm not here today to offer an opinion as to the appointment of Mr. Silva. Rather, I'd just like to take a quick opportunity to emphasize the importance of entities like Slough House Resource Conservation District in the county's compliance with the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. I'd like to thank Slough House and the other GSAs in the Casamna Sub Basin for their efforts so far in groundwater management. We have seven GSAs in that sub-basin and we've been working collaboratively together with help from the Water Forum. They're facilitating those meetings for us. And so so far, I think it's, it's gone really well. I'd also like to thank Slough House for their willingness to consider expanding their board. I think that demonstrates a recognition that they're responsible to a broad range of stakeholders and property owners. So I'd like to applaud that consideration in their, in their district. So as you know, Sigma is a really complicated, difficult thing for us all to handle. And the county can really use good, strong collaborative partners like Slough House in this proper, in this progress. So anyway, that's all I have.
All right.
Thank you.
Well said. Thank you, Carrie. Anyone else wish to address the board? Okay. And I just want to thank Mr. Garms for being here, remember the board, certainly, Barbara Washington for being here. I know it has an interest and has, you know, sought appointment to the board as well. I would just, before we take any action here, the comments from board members just kind of summarized by, say, I think that it is important that particularly, I think, in the heightened visibility for the district and its engagement to the point Carrie made. But I think that I said a moment ago, in the groundwater discussions and other activities, they really, you know, have, you know, gone to other entities to, I think, partner up and recognize those are challenging discussions. But I think it's also sparked an interest by a number of the folks in the small audience today, but others as well. So I think that, you know, as the board considers, obviously, it's their choice, but can, you know, looks at expanding, I think there's some wisdom in that, not to, you know, burden them with, you know, additional meetings and/or, you know, some of the things that would go with, obviously, quorum counts and so forth. But I think that it broadens the interest and you have both agricultural interests, you have agres interests, you have folks who are residents and landowners, business owners in the area that's represented. And, you know, we are going to be at a very critical time for the next few years on groundwater. But over time, obviously, the district and its work will be important and imperative to some of those decisions. And so I would hope that the board would continue to consider that. Obviously, Herb serves as one of those members and others on that board as well. And again, associate directorship, that's entirely up to the district, but I think that needs to be a meaningful role. And if it is a precursor to potentially serving on the board, then hopefully folks will look at that as an option. So I don't have anything further. I'm prepared certainly to, you know, support the nomination here today, again, with my comments being noted, and I appreciate the folks here. So unless anybody else wishes to weigh in.
Second.
Okay, I would move the appointment of Gary Silva to that seat. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. I thank you all. And I trust I'll be kept apprised of what the district does in the, in the future. Thanks. Okay. Anything else? Ms. Evans, before we adjourn?
No, that concludes your action items.
Okay, Mr. Gale, any executive comments?
No, sir, not to that.
No fallout from yesterday yet?
No, none.
Okay. Supervisor comments, any?
You got that Parks thing done?
Almost.
Okay. Check in tomorrow. Okay. Any else? All right, this is it then. So we will adjourn then until July 11th. We next come back into session, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. We adjourn.